Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this hearing of the Rules and Reference Committee to order. First, we'd like to thank my colleagues on council, Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Remy, Councilmember Tyson, and President Protem Stenziano. The purpose of this hearing is to review GCAC's proposed arts admissions fee and to hear feedback from the community. We'll first hear testimony from Tom Katzenmeyer, President and CEO of the Greater Columbus Arts Council, followed by Mr. Don Brown, Executive Director of the Franklin County Convention Facility Authority, and last but certainly not least, Bill Lafayette, owner of Regionomics. After their testimony, council members will have the opportunity to ask questions to our presenters, then we'll have the -- then we will open the floor for public comment. If you would like to speak and have not yet filled in a speaker slip, we have additional slips near the doors that you may complete and turn into council staff that will be making themselves available. This hearing will go until 7:00 PM, and we will take as many speaker slips as possible before that time. Additionally, there are community feedback forms that you can fill out if you would like to submit your comments that way that we have available today as well. I'd like to outline Columbus City Council's process for considering this proposal and where we are now. GCAC submitted their proposal to Columbus City Council on September 17th. Since the 17th, council has received feedback from residents, artists, from event organizers, and many other stakeholders. We have posted a survey on our website to solicit feedback, and at this point, more than 600 individuals have responded. Both I and my colleagues have been meeting with concerned stakeholders and will continue to do so. We have convened this public hearing to review the proposal and, more importantly, to hear feedback from the community. Listening is the most important thing this evening, and I hope that we can get to public comments sooner rather than later. Before we jump into the details of this proposal, there are a few principles I believe we can all agree on that help guide this conversation. Based on the community conversations to this point, I believe that we all want a proposal that, one, ensures equitable access to our world-class arts facilities; secondly, empowers independent artists; third, supports critical arts institutions and public facilities; and fourth, enhances the creative economy that is so important to our city and to our region. Those are the values and ideals that we can all strive for. Now, it's up to this community to get into the details to figure out how we do this. So at this point, I'd like to invite to our first speaker, Mr. Tom Katzenmeyer.
Good evening, Council President Harden, Councilmember Stenziano, Tyson, Brown, Remy. I appreciate you all being here and have given us an opportunity to present our proposal in this open public forum. Nonprofit arts and culture and professional sports and entertainment are major reasons Columbus has become a premier community by adding jobs, educational opportunities, economic benefits, and energy to our lives. Nonprofit arts and culture alone generates half a billion dollars in economic activity, 15,000 jobs, and nearly $400 million in household income, with the arena adding significantly more economic impact on top of that. Over 15 years and more than 30 studies have pointed to the fact that a stronger public investment is essential to prevent the erosion of these benefits to our community. We know that Columbus is dramatically underfunded publicly in the arts. Here's a graph -- I think I have some slides. There we go. Thank you. Here's a graph that shows what our per capita investment is compared to five other cities we compete with for business and tourism. You can see that the public per capita investment in Columbus is only $6.85 compared to $15.88 in Cleveland and $22.41 in Pittsburgh. This means we don't have the ability to compete for major tourism attractions and exhibitions like Infinity Mirrors, which drew thousands upon thousands of people to Cleveland earlier this year from across the Midwest, and it means our cultural organizations struggle to meet the education needs of our schoolchildren and disadvantaged families. At its core, the situation seriously threatens our ability to compete for business, tourism, and residence. You'll see this funding discrepancy manifested in another way in the next two pie charts as well. Both the Columbus Museum of Art and COSI's revenue streams are far out of balance compared to their peers nationally, and our organizations have done everything they can to address this. They have strengthened their leadership, tightened their budgets wherever they can, raised their prices, and they work their staff to the bone to raise the private sector dollars to keep them viable. You'll hear a little more later from Diana Ferguson, who did the financial analysis last year and confirmed the full extent of the funding gap. If we fail to stabilize our arts and cultural sector and arena, our city will suffer tangible losses, taking cultural facilities and the civic arena downhill, reducing jobs and family income, diminishing children's educational opportunities, and frankly, making us less competitive and attractive as a city. A 7% ticket fee paid by the ticket purchaser in the city of Columbus is the answer. It will keep jobs, income, educational value, and civic vitality in our community. Many other cities have ticket fees, many higher than 7%, but very few are investing those revenues back into their cultural sector. This is a collaboration in the Columbus way. In the course of our work, we thoroughly reviewed 13 different public funding sources. We selected the admissions fee because the Ohio Revised Code enables municipalities to do this, and 64 other cities in Ohio have admissions fees, including Cincinnati and Cleveland and three central Ohio communities, Reynoldsburg, Obets, and Canal Winchester. In addition, most of our competitive peer set cities, those that experience Columbus benchmarks against, have admissions fees on tickets either through the city, county, state, or some combination of those. A fee enacted solely by the city of Columbus keeps all the revenue generated right here invested back in the community, helping us to prepare for the million more residents we are expecting in the next 25 years. It's also very important for people to know that there is no sales tax on tickets and admissions in the city, so this is not a fee on top of the sales tax, which is 7.5% in Franklin County. And not every resident in Columbus will have to pay it, only those who already support arts, culture, entertainment with their participation and would like to see those opportunities continue to thrive and grow. And with nearly 50% of concert attendees at the three major arenas coming from outside central Ohio, this funding solution would broaden the base of support beyond just the residents of Columbus. National research shows that incremental price increases do not reduce attendance. Attendance is driven by increased economic development and the quality of the offering and the quality of the facility. This slide is an example of what ticket prices would be with the fee at some common ticket levels. In fact, attendance is more likely to suffer without this ticket fee. With deteriorating venues that can't compete with other cities, we'd have less shows, conventions, festivals, and other events. Less quality and availability will hurt attendance far more than a reasonable fee. The plan is fair. This is not a broad-based tax on city residents. Arts, culture, arena, and other major venues attendees will pay no matter where they live, and nearly half the arena concert attendance again is from outside Columbus. The Blue Jackets Arena is part of our proposal because it is a public facility that exists in the same ecosystem as our arts and culture organizations. Supporting a vibrant business district and residential downtown neighborhood as well as neighborhoods all across Columbus, contributing significant taxes to Columbus City Schools and drawing performances, conventions, and events like the Women's Final Four that have significant impact on our city. But the arena is near the bottom of the list of its competitors nationwide because it's a 19-year-old facility in need of capital upkeep, just like any building of its age would. The citizens of Columbus became the owners of the arena in 2012, and it's our responsibility to ensure that it remains a significant contributor to our economy. It can only do so if it stays in good repair. Through concerts and Blue Jackets games, the arena generates nearly 35% of the estimated admissions revenue each year. Under our proposal, as you can see on the slide, they would receive 30% of the proceeds, so the arena would be a net contributor to nonprofit arts and culture. In preparation for this proposal, we held three public forums and took community feedback to heart. There were over 500 people that attended these meetings. Our proposal incorporates the concerns we heard by recommending two primary exemptions: live arts and sports events priced at $10 and under and live events at venues with occupancy of 400 and under. The proposal was crafted to make sure that Columbus can continue to increase diversity, entrepreneurism, and drive all creative sectors forward. If enacted, the impact of this proposal would be visible to all residents in Columbus from the hilltop to the south side, from King Lincoln to Old Town East to Franklinton. We will have stable, vibrant cultural and entertainment facilities capable of driving tourism and business and talent and talent attraction and retention. Quality of life for central Ohioans will continue to improve with access to more festivals and neighborhood events. Education and outreach programs will expand, reaching far more young people in underserved communities and neighborhoods. We envision a city where every child has the opportunity to experience the arts regardless of their economic situation and where the arts are alive and vibrant in every neighborhood across Columbus. But without the 7% ticket fee, our arts, culture, and entertainment options will decline or disappear, and our children, neighborhoods, and underserved communities will suffer the most. This is simply too much for Columbus to risk. Columbus is on its way to becoming one of the top cities in the world. That requires a strong economy, quality education, well-rounded community, and vibrant quality of life. Our arts and cultural organizations and arena district are key parts of that vibrancy. The 7% fee is a smart solution and will keep these vital components of our community and economy working for Columbus for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katzenmeyer. And if my colleagues will oblige me, I would like to take questions after all the presenters. Thank you. Mr. Don Brown.
I'm Don Brown, Executive Director of the Convention Facilities Authority, or CFA, which the CFA owns and oversees the operation of the Greater Columbus Convention Center, the Hilton Columbus Downtown Hotel, several parking facilities, the Nationwide Arena. The arena was acquired in 2012 for the city and county's behalf and has been one of our city's major publicly-owned assets for the last six years. I want to thank you, President Harden, Council -- President Protem Stenziano, Councilmembers Brown, Remy, and Tyson for allowing us to present, along with Tom Katzenmeyer, to present you our arguments in favor of the Arts Council's admission fee proposal. Tom has spoken about how this proposal will benefit the many arts and cultural organizations in Columbus, but I want to add another point to what Tom said. The CFA believes deeply that arts and cultural organizations contribute to the value of our community. That's why the CFA has invested and built the largest contemporary collection of Columbus art, which residents and visitors can see free of charge at any time throughout our facilities. Arts and culture help define our city for the visitors who come to Columbus for meetings and conventions. Arts and culture add to the vibrancy of our community and allow visitors to experience what makes our community unique, interesting, smart, and diverse for our residents. Regarding the arena, capital improvement funds have been virtually nonexistent since the CFA took ownership in 2012 for the city and county. Capital improvement funds were to come -- were intended to come from a share of the city and county's casino tax revenues. However, casino tax revenues have never reached projections despite the expert predictions. Instead of producing $10 million per year, the authority has received $5 million per year in casino tax revenues, enough to assure arena operations, but not enough for arena improvements and repairs. Nationwide and Arena, in fact, ranks last in capital improvements among all major league arenas. The Arts Council proposal offers the best solution because it provides certainty and predictability that the arena's capital needs will be met long-term. What happens if the arena is unable to meet its capital needs? The arena has operated for 19 to 20 years. Without capital reinvestment, the arena won't meet our community's sports and entertainment needs for the next 20 years. Without reinvestment, our arena, our civic arena, will slide into obsolescence, just like downtown Cincinnati's U.S. Bank Arena has. Like Cincinnati, Columbus will no longer be able to host major conventions and sporting events. Without a certain and predictable revenue stream, the arena's capital needs cannot be financed and then repaid over their useful lives. We could have established an arena facility fee and retained all of the proceeds from that for the capital needs of the arena without legislation, without collaboration, and without being here tonight. But we felt it was important to contribute to the overall needs of the arts community as well as solving the arena's capital improvement needs, and that is why we've joined forces with the Arts Council in support of this proposal. Under the proposal, a 7% surcharge on tickets to arts events, entertainment, and professional sports would generate $13 million a year. Of that amount, 30% would go to -- for arena capital improvements. The other 70% would go to arts and support and sustain arts and cultural programs. These facts, I don't believe, are in dispute. What seems to be in dispute is the value of the arena to the community and whether it's fair to ask those who buy tickets for events held in the arena to contribute to the arena's future. We believe that solving the arena's capital improvement needs now by charging those who buy tickets for arena events is far better for everybody, including those who oppose the fee, than losing our downtown arena to obsolescence because of our inability to care for the community asset that's here today. Our community has always solved its problems collaboratively. For this reason, the Arts Council and CFA have come together in support of a proposal which would sustain both, recognizing that the arena will produce more than enough admission fee revenue to meet its long-term facility needs as well as sustain arts and cultural programs and facility. The arena will be a net contributor of support, not the reverse. In fact, nearly 50% of all admission fees will be generated by events held at three venues: Nationwide Arena, Schottenstein Center, and Ohio Stadium. I reemphasize that being a net contributor means that the arena will contribute more to maintaining arts and culture in Columbus than what the arena retains for its own capital needs, but we are glad to be a net contributor to support the arts. We believe that a downtown arena, a civic arena, is vital to our local economy and brings business and visitors here. Because of the arena, we were able to host the NCAA Women's Final Four Tournament earlier this year, which showcased our city to nearly 20,000 fans and captured the attention of a record-breaking television audience. The arena's upkeep is vital to the future of the arena's district, which accounts for some 10,000 direct and indirect jobs. It's vital to our sports economy and our ability to book major downtown concerts and other events, like the Avon Product Representatives and the 31 Gifts Annual Conferences held earlier this year. Not least, it's vital to the image and reputation of a growing, forward-thinking city known for inventing the Columbus Way of collaboration and for competing to be Amazon's second headquarters city. The Arts Council has identified the best solution, having examined a dozen other options. The Arts Council proposal offers the best way to meet two community needs: sustaining arts and cultural programs and sustaining our civic arena for the next 20 years. On behalf of the CFA, I ask you to adopt it. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And finally, we have Mr. Bill Lafayette with Regionomics.
Good evening, council members. I'm Dr. Bill Lafayette, owner of Regionomics, which is a neighborhood and community economic and workforce advisory firm based in Marion Village. I was asked to develop estimates of the potential revenue achievable by imposing a 7% admissions fee on tickets costing more than $10 to events and venues with more than 400 capacity. My estimates are summarized in the memo provided to you. This memo estimates annual fee revenue on the order of $12.3 million annually, based on relevant revenues of $175.3 million. It's important to emphasize that this is not a precise estimate, nor is it a forecast. It's an analysis based on historical data and involving a number of assumptions, which are discussed in the memo. However, I'm confident that it provides a reasonable order of magnitude estimate of the revenues that could be earned if the admissions fee proposal is adopted. The estimate includes detailed analysis of individual entertainment events at our larger performance venues, the ticket revenue reported by nonprofit arts organizations on their 990 forms, and an industry report of gross revenues of Columbus movie theaters. There is a possibility that movie tickets costing less than $10 could be included in the proposal. If that's the decision, fees would total $13.2 million on relevant revenues of $188 million annually. One final cautionary note is that these estimates were derived in a period of economic strength. Because entertainment is a discretionary purchase, we should expect a significant decline in fee revenues in a recession. Economists generally believe that the chance of the next recession beginning within the coming 12 months is remote, but a number of economists think that it may begin as soon as 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lafayette. Certainly, we'll open up to questions from my colleagues. I'd also encourage council members to ask questions in between public speakers, and so we -- or feel free to limit your questions before the public speaking so we can get to that as well. But the one question I had, and I'll pick up, Mr. Lafayette, from where you just left off, around the exemptions. In the GCAC proposal, there were two outlined provisions: $10 and under for live performances and for smaller venues. Wondering what the philosophy was for coming up with those -- with the exemptions and specifically interested in the point that Mr. Lafayette made around the movie ticket $10 and under still being taxed in the proposal.
President Harden, if I could start, I'll start. Thank you for the question. We, as I mentioned, we had three public -- okay, okay. Here it is. Sorry about that. With three public meetings attended by more than 500 people, lots of meetings like you have been doing over the past several weeks here, we had a lot of public input on ticket price and venue size, a lot of independent artists, small artists -- okay. Small artists gatherings, comedians, magician -- magic shows, things like that where the ticket prices are low, $10 and under. We also had some pushback from the Columbus Clippers, where there are a lot of tickets for children, families, lower-priced tickets. In fact, the -- by reducing it to $10 and under, it took about $1 million out of the estimate that we thought we could get from Huntington Park, so that was the impact of doing that. But it was largely done philosophically to help the independent music business and the independent performers that are in Columbus, who we heard from very loudly in these public meetings.
Thank you. And, Mr. Lafayette, did I hear, though, that the estimates that you have provided do not include movie theater tickets under $10?
They -- there are two estimates in the memo, one with and one without.
Thank you. President Protem.
Thank you, President Harden. Thank you all for the presentation. Could you educate us a little bit on why we landed on 7%? The state average is 3%. Why 7%? I understand the needs, but when we're out and hearing from a lot of folks, they're, you know, Cleveland's 8%. Why are we going at 7?
So you'll hear some more detail about the number that we had to solve for in terms of the gap that we see coming for the arts organization. So we knew that we had to get to a number in the range of $15 million, give or take, to solve the sustainability and viability of the arts problem. So that being the solve, obviously, Bill has helped us craft an estimate based on the number of tickets sold at different venues in the city of Columbus. We also looked at what other cities are doing. As you mentioned, Cleveland has had an 8% ticket fee in place for 23 years, and obviously, the Ohio statute allows city councils to do this, so we've looked at other cities in Ohio, and we've taken a hard look at cities that we compare ourselves to in competing for the convention and travel and tourism business. And this is the number that makes it work, the 7% number.
One follow-up. I mean, I know we're hearing a lot that by not having a fee, we have a competitive advantage, that we're able to attract different arts, different concerts. Can you speak to whether or not it's your position, we do have a competitive advantage, and if it exists, is -- and I don't know if it's a Regionomics question, is there dollars behind that impact?
There have been analyses -- oh, sorry. There have been analyses of the impact of the arts community on Columbus. Americans for the Arts has done repeated studies of that, and I'm not sure if Tom has that number at the top of his head, but they are -- those impacts go in well into the millions.
The other thing I would say, Councilman Stenziano, is that we looked at 29 cities, and there are fees across those cities, and again, the research firm Burgess -- and Burgess in Cleveland did this work for us, and there we don't see anything anywhere where there's a negative impact from putting these fees, so I don't know about the other side of your question, whether there's an advantage or not to Columbus. Probably not the person qualified to answer that question.
Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, President Harden. Just have a few questions. And so the first is to Don. What is the estimation of the capital needs for the arena?
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. We've had a facilities needs assessment done by a team of engineers. They've developed -- and from that, we've developed a 10-year capital plan, and the average annual capital need is $4 million. That is -- that will swing from year to year from $2 and $3 million to $7 or $8 million, depending upon the projects that are undertaken, but it averages $4 million per year over the 10-year capital plan life.
So with this proposal getting 30%, that would get you to about 3.9% to be able to meet those needs if this was approved with the number of $13 million that would be correct. I just did the math, so I'm pretty sure that's right.
Yeah.
So 3. -- I mean, 3.9.
It does, depending on whether, you know, what -- whether the proposal was modified further to exempt -- to include other exemptions or not. to exempt, to include other exemptions or not. But it would cover the lion’s share of the annual capex need.
All right. Thank you. And in your proposal, with the 100, assuming that the movie tickets were to stay in, of course, that’s the $13.13 million that would be part of this, the proposal, the new dollars that would go to the arts and to the arena. And just, you mentioned that 50% of, so why, 50% of the, the arena will be a net contributor of support, not the reverse. In fact, nearly 50% of all admission fees will be generated, will be generated by events that are held by Nationwide Arena.
Excuse me, Councilmember, by Nationwide Arena, Schottenstein Center, and Ohio Stadium in combination. So 50% of all admission fee collected will come from those three venues.
Thank you. And then the other question, I know that, I think Tom mentioned it in his presentation, was that if we did not provide additional funding, that the arts programming for children would not be able to be enhanced. So could you talk a little bit about the importance of what the arts organizations are doing in terms of providing the arts education to children in this community?
Yes, thank you for the question, Councilwoman Tyson. First and foremost, the arts offering from the nonprofit organizations that we fund impacts 750,000 schoolchildren locally every year, so very, very broad impact. Lots of things are offered. You’re going to hear from some other witnesses today about some of those programs, but there is an incredible focus on helping disadvantaged populations have access to the arts. The Net’s going to testify in a minute, but they have a free program on Sundays. As you know, the museum’s open free every Sunday. So there’s things like that that are going on. There’s educational programming offering, offered across these organizations. I think Janet Chen is here tonight. She’s going to talk about the Play It Forward program that they do with disadvantaged populations in the school district. This proposal is a sustainability program for arts and culture in Columbus. We are not even ranked sustainable with our peer cities. So first and foremost, we need to shore everybody up until we can get to some new things. So that’s what the focus of this sort of $13 million in funding that we’re proposing tonight. So it’ll keep everything in place that we’re doing now, and I think once we have a couple of years of that and we see where we are, we can add some enhancements to the work that we’re doing in the neighborhoods and specifically for schoolchildren.
All right. So we’ll continue to have the program that we currently have, and this is, as you said, a sustainability funding to be able to be competitive with the other, with some of our competitiveness across the country.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. I want to follow up on a question that Councilmember Tyson had specifically to Don around the Nationwide Arena being specified in the code. We have other really important institutions, public institutions in town. Is there an opinion on why or how, if we should include other important facilities like COSI or CAPA facilities in such a fund or codified in this legislation?
Council President Harden, it’s certainly, I recognize, the CFA recognizes that there are other public assets, public facilities, in addition to the arena, that the city has or shares responsibility for. While the 30% set aside was calculated with Nationwide Arena’s needs in mind, it certainly, council would be free to take the same approach towards meeting the needs of other publicly-owned facilities and to size the set aside to incorporate, for example, COSI as well, for example, the Conservatory as well, if that were the approach that council preferred to take. That would, the roof, all of us need roof replacements from time to time, or boiler replacements. The arena may be unique in that it has a very expensive scoreboard system that it needs to replace from time to time. But other than that, the facility repairs and improvement needs are in common.
Thank you. I just make the point because the city supports a lot of these facilities in different types of ways on capital funds, so in terms of being fair and equitable in support.
It’s a fair statement, Council President, and I’d simply say yes, but the math might have to be revisited.
Thank you. Councilmember Tyson.
Yes, thank you, President Harden. I just want to add to that. I know that this is, the arena was acquired by the city and the county. So it would be a public entity that we support, just like if we were to do this, just as if we support, you know, COSI, we support Franklin Park Conservatory, we also, in their capital needs, we also support the Martin Luther King Center. So there are some exceptions that we do fund based upon it being part of our city’s portfolio and those relationships. And this would be, as, since we are now, we’ve acquired it, so the county and the city, that’s in our portfolio. Thank you. Thank you, President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the insight on thinking about some of the other public facilities that we have. Mr. Brown, could you tell us a little bit, I know we’ve talked a little bit about some of the specific needs in Nationwide and some of the things that haven’t been repaired, and I just wanted a little bit more detail around that. What are some of the immediate needs today? A, to make it competitive with other markets, but also because things may be failing?
Thank you, Councilman, Councilmember Remy. They are both back-of-house and front-of-house, but all of them relate to the overall fan experience. And, you know, fans prefer to come to a venue because they enjoy, they have a good time and they enjoy the event, whether it’s live entertainment or sporting event there. So over, in the past three years, we’ve replaced the seat cushions and seat backs in both the upper bowl and lower bowl, all 18,000 seats. That was approximately a $2 million investment. That is not a permanent investment. We’ll have to, we’ll need to undertake that again in probably 10 years. We’re in a building that’s now 19 or 20 years old. It has a 25-year roof, and so we forecast the need to, for a $5 million roof replacement sometime in the next five, six years. The scoreboard, the electronic scoreboard, which is a key to fan experience, is a $7 million investment. Because of the electronics and the technology, it’s one of the first things that goes obsolete. So we would anticipate in the next 10 years to have to replace the scoreboard, even though I’m told it’s better than Detroit’s right now. Those are examples. The club level and concord level need to be reworked, refreshed, and possibly rebuilt to take a different approach toward accommodating groups that no longer necessarily want to rent, want to rent or lease a suite for 20 or 30 or 40 people, but would prefer a more open environment with access to food offerings in common rather than having to order food event by event. So United Arena and Chicago has done that very successfully. Other arenas have taken the same approach. And again, I’m mentioning things that our competitive center are doing and that we need to do in order to remain competitive.
If I could add, if I could add one comment to that, Councilman, and it relates to Councilmember Stenziano’s question about the competitive advantage, it is in the quality of the facility and the quality of the offering, not the fees that are on the ticket. It’s the quality of the facility and the quality of the offering.
And I would add, it’s the growth and vitality of central Ohio economy. So the demographics are drawing events here, and the prosperity of the community is drawing events here, too.
Certainly, you have to remain competitive. I mean, there’s a reason why Detroit just put in Little Caesar’s Arena with a billion-dollar-plus cost. The Pistons are moving downtown, so you just happened to mention that, so I thought I would chime in on it. I also have a question for Mr. Katzenmeyer. I know that, I don’t know that you’ve done a lot of looking into this, but is there, you know, if you had to think aspirationally, should this pass, what would that mean for the accessibility aspect that you talked about, not only for schoolchildren but across the board? You know, I’m very interested in how we make all of our events related to the arts more accessible for those that might be maybe not of the means that can afford to go to certain events.
Right. Clearly, that is a priority of ours in all the grant-making that we do. We require it. We require accessibility. We require underprivileged populations to be served by our programming. This recommendation, this proposal that we’ve presented to you, we could about double the amount of grant-making that we could do to the arts organizations and actually to the artists themselves. So as you know, we’re doing grant-making to individual artists in terms of supply grants, travel grants, professional development grants. They are the underpinnings of this creative community here, and there’s a lot of them here, I think, sitting behind me. And to get the money out to them and, you know, to encourage them in their work and staying here and creating an atmosphere for accessibility, it is one of our highest priorities to continue that work.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
President Protam.
Just one more, since we talked about the quality of the venue, and we mentioned US Bank. So US Bank, not a great facility in Cincinnati, but if Phish is going to be playing there, I’m going to go. And so how much is it the act that really drives folks compared to the facility? Or I’ll use the old Vets Memorial. When Bob Dylan played there, I went to go see Bob Dylan. Wasn’t a great facility, respectfully, when you were county administrator, and we spent a lot of time at Vets Memorial, Don Brown. How, I mean, part of the question of what’s going to attract these artists, what’s going to attract the events, that’s what I’m hearing a lot about. A lot of people are excited about some of the concerts that are coming up in the near future, or the plays that are being targeted in the near future. Trying to balance that out when we’re talking with residents of these fees are going to help attract that, or, and I think we understand the importance of the portfolio of the facilities, but it’s really the acts that have been my experience of what motivates me to spend my dollars or other families to spend their dollars.
Certainly, the talent is the biggest draw, and there’s no question about that, President Protam. But I was, but I believe the seat-back cushions and the chair cushions themselves were, you know, would be, have a significant influence on how long of a concert that you or I might endure. I think that, and so it’s important that we do make the fans comfortable for the live entertainment or for the sporting event they’re there for. It’s important that the sound system works so that when that last final shot by Notre Dame beat the buzzer, that everyone could hear it and understand what had happened.
And Councilmember, if you’d be the last question, then we’ll get to public comment.
I’m sorry. I thank you. And I probably have two questions. I think we have to answer a question because we’re accountable to the residents of our community. And certainly, I do appreciate the arts in a significant way. But there’s two questions I think that I have to ask. The first is in regards to Nationwide Arena. I think that we have to continue to talk about that it is an arena for all of Columbus, and that because some people’s perception is that it is strictly for the Blue Jackets, and everyone in Columbus doesn’t, you know, go to Blue Jackets games. And that’s a perception that’s out here about sometimes the arena. And so can you speak to the fact of all the other types of venues that happen at the arena that this community goes to, that they attend? Whoever wants to take that question.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. The arena also, in addition to hosting the Blue Jackets, being the home ice for the Blue Jackets during the hockey season, hosted several dozen live entertainment events there for the, that drew people from the community, I think. My colleague Tom mentioned that it drew fans from over 50, nearly 50% of the fans came from outside of Columbus to attend a concert or live show there. They came from all 50 states and from the District of Columbus. So we, it is an attraction. It, that, it did over $35 million worth of ticketed admissions and concession activity for non-hockey events last year, the ticketed events. In addition to that, it served as the Student Orientation Center, New Student Orientation Center for the Ohio State University for the last several years, and has hosted high school graduations for several school districts in central Ohio, including the Columbus School District. This coming year, I think between the Convention Center and the arena, all but two high school graduations for the Columbus School District were hosted. And this coming year, all of them will be hosted either at the arena or in the Convention Center. So we do see ourselves, we do recognize that we have a civic purpose as well.
And then to Tom, and this is just, can you just talk, Tom, about GC, the work of GCAC in relationship to thinking about Columbus being an open and diverse community, that the work of GCAC in terms of making sure they’re reaching out to diverse communities?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. We are hosting public forums all the time. We are hosting opportunities for artists to learn about the business world, things like that. We have had, I think, more than 50 last year, public sessions where we have been out in the neighborhoods, teaching people how to apply for our grants. When we do that, we go to libraries, community centers. We’ve been all over the city of Columbus, very aggressive push on that last year. So you’re going to see us doing more and more of that kind of work.
Thank you, councilmembers. We’ll go now move to public testimony. Just a reminder that you have three minutes, and if you would state your name, your address, and any organization that you may represent. Again, this is the most important part of this hearing for a council member and for the community. So we’ll get started. First person is Ms. Jessica Joseph.
Good evening. I’m Jessica Joseph. My address is 2231 Oxford Road, Columbus, Ohio, 43221, and I’m speaking on behalf of the Columbus Museum of Art. I first want to thank city council for hearing our testimony this evening. The museum has been a part of our family since we moved to Columbus in 2016. As a mom moving to a new city, the museum provided an anchor for my family. It’s not just a place for us to visit, but a hub where we could meet our community and share our experiences with other families with young children. CMA is committed to quality young child learning. As a mom with a preschool-aged child, the museum’s approach to learning resonated with me. The museum champions play, curiosity, creativity, and imagination through programs like Young Child Studios and Artful Adventures Tours. CMA is teaching artists, welcoming young children, and... CMA is teaching artists, welcome young children and their caregivers without judgment, showing them that the museum and the art therein belong to the Columbus community regardless of age. They carry the same philosophy and sense of openness and friendliness into libraries, community centers, and public events with their Museum on the Move program. Not everyone has the opportunity to visit the physical museum building. To that end, their team brings creative thinking and making into the Columbus neighborhoods, facilitating imaginative discussions and hands-on art-making activities across the city. I have had the pleasure of bringing my daughter to these programs, and have always been impressed and excited by the way these open-ended projects engage children and caregivers with each other. In addition, families who have not met before end up in discussions with each other. This type of social bridging makes Columbus a uniquely connected and friendly city, and CMA is one of the amazing cultural institutions that make that social bridging possible. I encourage so many of my friends with children to visit the museum, and I always remind them that it is free on Sundays. CMA has made a commitment to open its doors for free on Sunday to provide access to people who might not otherwise be able to attend. These Sundays are vibrant and busy with people from across the city who have chosen the museum as a place to share an experience, connect with their families and friends, and build relationships. The proposed ticket fee would provide essential support to the CMA, an institution that, like all cultural institutions, relies on the generous support of donors and revenue from visitors. The fee would support learning experiences for young and curious minds, community engagement and outreach experiences, and access for our diverse and growing city. It is not just about access to the arts, but access to each other and our ideas, experiences, friendships, and relationships, and hopes for future Columbus. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph, for your testimony. The next speaker that we have before council is Cassie Hurley-Hook. Ms. Cassie will be followed by Mr. Peter Yocel and Mr. Jim Lorimer.
Hi, I'm Cassie Hurley-Hook. I live at 281 Winthrop Road, Columbus, Ohio, 43214. And thank you for hearing us again. I am an educator in Columbus City Schools, an art educator, and I would like some of the funds from the proposed ticket fee to go to Columbus, to the Columbus Museum of Art and its education department. The Columbus Museum of Art has had a great impact on our students. For close to 50 years, the museum and Columbus schools have partnered to bring the arts to life for our students. We're able to provide every single fifth grader in the city with a free trip to the museum with this partnership. Over 5,000 students a year get to go to this program. This year, due to our budget cuts in Columbus City Schools, we don't know, and the tight financial landscape of the museum, we're all worrying about this fifth-grade program. We do not know if we can guarantee that each student will get to go this year. We just don't have the money. They don't have the money to bus the students to the museum. The museum can't afford the costs. To cover that cost, they already give us free admission, educational services and support. We need this program desperately. The students deserve to see the art that we have here in Columbus. Sometimes, this is their only time to get to see the museum. They don't even know it exists if we don't go through the schools. It's not just our fifth graders who benefit at the museum. They have preschool programs through 12th grade programs to give opportunities to our students. The Columbus Museum of Art also provides professional development to the summer work, and summer workshops for teachers so that we can keep up on what's going on throughout the world and the country. Most of these are free or at a nominal fee. We have, they provide PDs for us at the museum, for the Columbus City School art teachers. Right now, we're trying to get together to get the Harlem Renaissance into our schools, and the museums have an exhibit, and if the teachers can get in there and see it, we can get the kids in there. That's what the kids will be seeing, too. So, it's sharing through the community, cultural events. The students at the school, the students at the Columbus City Schools are the employees that are going to be coming into the Columbus area, and the 21st Century Employer is looking for workers with skills in creativity, critical thinking, problem-solving, communications, and collaboration. All of these skills converge within the arts, even if it's a STEM. I work at a STEM academy, and the arts still spread through the math and science. It's just the way it works. The average art museum, as you saw on the slides, they get 20%. Thank you.
The next speaker to come before, any questions? And remember, councilmembers, you can ask at any time. Next person to come before council, Mr. Peter Yocel, followed by Mr. Jim Lorimer and Betsy Pandora.
Good evening, and thank you for hearing our story. I'm Peter Yocel. I live at 43 Birkel Street in the Short North. I am on, one of the founding board members of Short North Stage, which is located at the Garden Theater. Short North Stage is a relatively new arts group when compared to the more venerable and established organizations like the Columbus Museum of Arts, Ballet Met, Columbus Children's Theater, or the Symphony. However, in seven years, we have accomplished quite a lot, and I'd like to talk a little bit about that and how it relates to the cultural and economic activity in the city. We employ, it might not be understood, but we employ over 200 professional artists every year. Beyond that, we provide resources to a community of well over 20,000 people. In addition, the restaurateurs and the other people, the shop owners around the theater, talk or thank me constantly for bringing in people to the neighborhood to, you know, peruse their shops and eat at their restaurants. We estimate that 75% of all the people who come to see a show eat at a restaurant near, within walking distance of the theater before coming to the show. So, all of these things add up, and they create an environment in which we've been able to have a certain amount of success. And I mentioned the several following things, not to blow or trumpet the success of Short North Stage, but to show you what a catalyst the arts can be in a community. In 2013, we did a show called Sunday in the Park with George. The director of that show, who we brought in from New York because she was a niece of one of the authors of that show, who grew up in Ohio, by the way. She wanted to bring that show back to her community, and as it turns out, she took it to Broadway, and it was on Broadway last year. And that happened because we were here, and she credited us, Short North Stage, with her ability to do something like that. We were able to partner with six other arts organizations throughout the city to have an August Wilson Festival. And last year, we were named one of the top 10 regional, up-and-coming regional theaters in the country by the American Theater Wings Award, which gives out the Tonys. Now, I tell you these things because none of that would have been possible if the Greater Columbus Arts Council had not taken a chance on us. And the magic and the creativity of central Ohio will always ensure that startups happen. But what we're talking about here today is sustainability, and at a certain point, you become the victim of your own success. Every year, you see more opportunities, more needs, and more wear and tear on your facilities, more expectations for your staff, and it becomes increasingly difficult, actually, the more successful you are, to maintain and sustain. And so, this tax initiative, our admissions initiative, would greatly help us in that regard. And I will tell you that, oh, nothing more.
Sure, and just a reminder, we have slipped, so if folks aren't getting there full-time, we want to hear comments. We just want to be respectful of the many, many speakers that we have available. Yeah, Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you. Peter, I just want to commend you for the work that you have done with the theater, and certainly, I do appreciate the diversity of the productions that you have put on. Certainly, the August Wilson series was pretty amazing, so I thank you for a building that was in the, coming far into the Short North, a building that was not being used, the hard work that you and many others did to establish that theater, and so, just again, thank you for bringing that art form to our community.
Mr. Jim Lorimer.
Mr. President, members of council, it was just five months ago that we were here as City Council adopted a much-appreciated resolution commending the Arnold Sports Festival for its four decades of contribution to the life and economy of our great Columbus community. It is regretted that this evening we must discuss serious concerns that are being strongly felt in our city's large and important event presentation community. Thus foreboding arises from the unfair, unneeded, and unjust tax proposal being urged upon City Council. A tax that would benefit just one segment of our event-producing industry, to the serious financial and attendance detriment of the vast majority of our community's wide-ranging entertainment industry. Fifty of our city's event producers have joined in an anti-tax coalition. I am one of their highly-concerned spokespersons this evening. Ticket sales are the lifeblood of every event that is presented and produced. Taking these crucial ticket sales and transferring those hard-earned proceeds to others who are themselves event producers, as well as funding the maintenance of an arena that none of our local event producers can afford to use, is unjust, financially harmful, unneeded, and wrong for every ticket purchaser, for every family, and for every event in our community. We have appreciated the opportunity to share with most members of council the large list of our concerned coalition members who oppose this oppressive ticket tax. They represent organizations that have for decades been working and presenting the widest possible range of entertainment and family enjoyment experiences offered in any community. Our threatened anti-tax coalition feels strongly that this proposed enforced transfer of funds will seriously damage their businesses. Profit margins, if indeed there are profits from their events, will be impaired or lost, and payment of a ticket tax will be required even though there is no profit.
Mr. Lorimer, thank you so much. One, I want to say thank you. We've had an opportunity to sit down and speak, and you raised several questions and concerns.
And I have several more, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lorimer. The next person to come before council is Ms. Betsy Pandora, followed by Susan Pringle and Doug Kreiler.
Clock me in. President Harden, President Protem Stenziano, and Councilmembers Reemy Brown and Tyson, thank you so much for holding this hearing tonight. This is a critically important issue, and funding for arts and culture is vital to our city. I'm Betsy Pandora. I'm the Executive Director of the Short North Alliance. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization whose mission is to nurture the Short North Arts District as a vibrant, creative, inclusive community and leading arts destination. We're located at 886 North High Street. The Short North Alliance is in support of the Greater Columbus Arts Council's proposal before Columbus City Council to increase public support of arts and culture in Columbus through the addition of a 7% fee on tickets and admissions sold in the city of Columbus. We believe the Greater Columbus Arts Council has conducted exhaustive research on ways to increase public funding for arts and culture, and has proven that the need among Columbus arts and cultural groups, including those located in the Short North Arts District, is substantial. Just reflecting back on 2017, the Short North Arts District was home to 250 visual arts exhibitions featuring over 550 artists presented by galleries and businesses in the district. It was home to 150 buskers, musicians, and performers of all kinds during gallery hop the first Saturday of each month, over 1,200 musical productions, theatrical productions, drag performances, bands, and other performance events held at businesses and by nonprofit organizations, and at venues throughout the Short North Arts District, 30 community-wide events, festivals, parades, and celebrations, and two new public art projects. The economic impact of all of these arts and cultural activities, including activities at the arena occurring in the Short North Arts District, are significant and instrumental in our business community's ability to generate nearly $300 million in annual sales revenue a year, and to employ nearly 10,000 workers. Additionally, we believe that the Greater Columbus Arts Council has thoughtfully considered feedback from the community. Through the public engagement process, the Short North Alliance shared concerns from our community regarding how the proposed fees, if applied too broadly, could challenge small businesses or cause them to limit the ways they sustain programs that support artists or encourage creative community experiences. Small businesses who offer creative workshops, or who feature local musicians, and who lack the infrastructure to administer a user fee, might not offer those creative programs or support artists. Our concerns were addressed in the proposal delivered to Columbus City Council. Existing funding programs from the Greater Columbus Arts Council have been instrumental in supporting the professional development of many artists represented by galleries in the Short North Arts District, in allowing events and public art programs in the district to grow and expand, and in helping the district's arts and cultural nonprofits sustain their operations. As a nonprofit organization, whose programs would be subject to the proposed user fee, we see its value for our entire community and are in support of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Pandora. The next speaker to come before council is Ms. Susan Pringle, again, followed by Douglas Kreiler and Chris Hummel.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. As mentioned, my name is Susan Pringle, and I'm the Executive Director for Columbus Children's Theater. To give you a sense of our footprint in the Columbus community, we have three locations, one on the north side of downtown, one on the Whittier Peninsula, and then our theater on Park Street. Each year, we reach 110,000 students, and I thank you for your question earlier about the impact on the children in the community, because that is the primary mission of Columbus Children's Theater. As a 55-year-old organization, this year, we will reach our 2,000,000th student, and we have a mantra that we use at Columbus Children's Theater. We say, "Every advantage, every student." And what we mean when we say that is that we strive to reach through our programs, sensory-friendly programming, touch tours, audio descriptions, sign-interpreted performances, every student who learns or experiences a performance or a workshop in different ways. The only limitation to the number of students that we reach right now is the level of funding and earned revenue that we can derive from the programming we offer. If the functional deficit that was identified within the process that led us to this point is remedied by the solution set forth today, we've taken a high look, or taken a high-level look at a pro forma budget moving forward, and by 2022, we believe we can reach 15% to 20% more students. This is a significant impact, and it will reach thousands of students in schools around central Ohio and some of our most central Ohio and some of our most disadvantaged students. So we thank you for the opportunity to present today, and we ask for your careful consideration on the ticket fee proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pringle. Next person to come before council is Doug Kreidler, followed by Chris Hummel, Susan Bradford.
I am Doug Kreidler. I reside at 2355 Brixton Road, and I work at 1234 Broad Street in Columbus. Council President Harden and council members, thank you for these hearings and for the time you are taking to listen to the community as you consider your way forward on this opportunity. For those who may not know, before I became president of the Columbus Foundation, I ran Kappa, taking it from one theater, the Ohio Theater, which we pulled back from the brink of bankruptcy, to four theaters, acquiring the Palace, the Southern, and the management of the Rice Center Theaters. And during my time at Kappa, we oversaw over 1,900 concerts and events. I mention this only to convey that I'm very familiar with the issues facing the arts in our community, both from an arts manager's and now a funder's perspective. And it is from that perspective that I offer that our community can be very impressed with and proud of what the arts community has done to earn this chance for further investment. Seven years ago, the Columbus Foundation engaged a national expert to create the first arts sustainability report ever undertaken for a community in the U.S. Following the completion of that report, the Columbus Partnership joined the Columbus Foundation in issuing a four-part challenge to the arts community. The arts community has met each of these challenges, and I believe has earned the right to seek the support that you are considering. One year after the private sector issued these challenges to the arts came, excuse me, the invitation from the city to work with human service leaders and experience Columbus through the establishment of its Funding Review Advisory Commission. I'm very familiar with this process since, from its inception, as I was asked by City Council to chair this effort. And while I couldn't act, while I couldn't chair it, I actively supported the frac process through its completion. Simply put, the proposal you have in front of you was a result of that city request for analysis and the collaboration around funding ideas and solutions. So the proposal before you is the result of years of analysis done, challenges made, and challenges met. We applaud the arts sector for the thorough dispatch of its responsibilities, as we also applaud City Council for setting up the frac process in the first place. A word about arts leadership in Columbus: It is investment-grade. First, on the managerial side, our arts administrators are a diverse and talented lot, highly responsive and collaborative leaders who work extraordinarily, extraordinarily hard to build the culture of this community. And on the leadership, cultural leadership side, we are so lucky...
You can finish your thought, Mr. Kreidler.
We are so lucky, thank you, to have extraordinary talent across the board, talent on an international scale. The results of their work have been so impressive, showing what is possible if we can do our part as a community to support the truly unique and significant contributions artists make to unifying, uplifting, and inspiring our community. Three things that we need more than ever now in America and in Columbus.
Thank you, Mr. Kreidler. I think President Protem has a question.
Quick question. Thank you, President Harden. So one thing we're going to hear is let the voters decide. And curious, your thoughts of instead of letting council, having the voters weigh in? Because I do think we've seen great leadership from our arts community. I think we have, we do know we have great institutions, great programming. What, could you speak to kind of the value of us passing versus maybe going to the ballot?
I didn't run for public office. And I know you have daunting responsibilities to, to balance the interests and perspectives of many people. So if you would allow me, I'll defer to the stage of this process that you're in right now. And I just offer that historical perspective so that one can understand that this isn't something that emerged overnight. This is something that has been very planful, open, and the accountability of the arts organizations preceding this request is above reproach.
Next speaker is Chris Hummel, followed by Susan Bradford and Mike Gonadakis.
President Harden, members of City Council, my name is Chris Hamel. I reside at 239 Lake Bluff Drive in Columbus. I am the President of Gateway Film Center and the Board Chairman of the Greater Columbus Film Commission. Like many in the audience today, I represent a nonprofit arts organization, and it is likely that if the proposal we're discussing proceeds as planned, we will apply a new fee to our ticket sales. I'm here to state emphatically that I am in favor of this new fee. There's multiple reasons why I support the proposal. First, I believe in the program we present at Gateway Film Center. In 2017, we screened 744 total films, 408 of which screened only with us in central Ohio, and those films represented 43 different countries. Now here are some real statistics about our patrons and the proposed fee. So far, in 2018, we have served right about 250,000 patrons. On average, each of those patrons paid $6.63 per ticket. If you choose to adopt this proposal, our patrons would pay an additional 46 cents per ticket, raising our average ticket price to just $7.09. Now I regard our work as essential and do not think our audience will be deterred by this minor price increase. I also believe in central Ohio and the people I share it with. This minor increase in patron ticket cost will be an important investment for our community, and it will greatly benefit and improve the lives of the people we share it with. And finally, I believe the arts have a long history of bringing people together. They work to increase understandings across disparate and historically unequal groups and support the agency of underrepresented communities to create, maintain, and share their own stories. I know the Greater Columbus Arts Council has spent years researching how to best help our arts community grow, and has demonstrated a willingness to listen to the community before they submitted this proposal for your consideration. So thank you for allowing me to speak today and for conducting this hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Thank you. Next speaker to come before council is Ms. Susan Bradford, followed by Mike Gonadakis and Larry James.
Good evening, President Harden and council members. My name is Susan Bradford, and I speak before you today as General Manager of the Lincoln Theater. I live at 689 Kimball Place, but my parents, my children think I live at 679 East Long Street. But I tell them it's all for the goodwill. I want to say shamelessly that in August, I was able to see the play Hamilton in London. So there's three things that stuck out with me. One is that you want to be in the room where it happens, and I think this is the room where, where decisions and things happens for our city. Two, it was make them hear you. So I want to thank you for hearing me and also the colleagues and organizations who stand behind me and also speak before you today. The third one was don't want to lose my shot. So I'm going to take my shot today and at this time. First, I want to say that 10 years ago, the vision of the Lincoln Theater was realized thanks to the support of the Greater Columbus Arts Council, public, and the public funding for this, for the arts. Our mission-driven programs have included being an incubator for emerging artists, and four of those seven programs are free to the artists of, of our Columbus community. We are the, are the Center for Community Engagement. We create that space for local artists and local organizations to come there to have conversation about how to move our city forward. The other one is that we look at non-traditional and traditional ways to partnership and collaborate, and over the 10 years, we have had very successful partnerships and collaborations. We remain a steward and a catalyst for the King Lincoln District. We have seen its growth both inside and outside of our walls. And our last one is that we are presenter of high-quality talent, and now we are promoting those artists who have grown inside of our programs at the Lincoln Theater. Just a few points of our success. We have welcomed over 300,000 patrons to the, through our doors since 2009. The development, the nurturing, and employment of local artists have reached over 200, and the funding from, and to the Lincoln Theater from all entities have seen an exponential return on their investment. And now currently, the Lincoln has a reputation of finding innovative ways to remain nostalgic. The new proposed tax, the new proposed ticket fee will allow the work of the Lincoln Theater and its supporting organizations and agencies to continue this artistic explosion and creative mo, moment, creative momentum that has moved Columbus to a very attractive and a very affordable residential art city in every aspect. As General Manager, I have created, I have witnessed, and I am proud of the great, of the growth of the artistic mecca, and wish for all who live in Ohio and visit Columbus, Ohio, see our work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bradford. Councilor Tyson.
Susan, Susan, thank you for taking your shot today. I appreciate those three points, but I also really appreciate, when I was asking about the diversity of the arts, I do appreciate the work of the Lincoln Theater as well as certainly the MLK, because you are definitely focused on the diversity of this commune, not that the others aren't, but yours specifically has a, a major focus. And I appreciate your leadership and your work of making sure that the center is inclusive, and it's been really amazing to watch this organization grow from the, and also Larry's, Larry's sitting there, but certainly watching this organization from its inception to where it is today. Thank you for your leadership.
Mr. It's actually Mr. Gonadakis then Mr. James.
I can, I can get my time to Larry if you want.
That's the Columbus way.
It is. My name is Larry James, 500 South Front Street, Columbus, Ohio. Thank you, President, President Protem, council members. I have my two nieces with me, Leila and Naomi, who consume the arts. Sustainability of the arts guarantees diversity in the arts. And I just want to take a different route and just recap what we did with Harlem Renaissance. We raised that money ourselves, a total of $230,000. So you've seen diversity in a way that this city has never seen it before. What this revenue will do, it will guarantee the opportunity. Right now, we have 30 different arts organizations participating, 150 black artists, and it's growing day by day. Urban Strings collaborated with New Albany over the weekend. One thing I think when we look at, for instance, what the Lincoln has done when we just did Tigerland, we gave away 200 free tickets. We gave away 180 books. We gave that because folks came out of their pockets to support this initiative. Without it, it can't be done. If one child learns to swim at three, and another child learns to swim at 12, guess about the disparity? And I'll leave you with this thought. I remember when we had the American for Disabilities Act and the accommodation for sidewalk accommodations. Government decided it was the right thing to do for the quality of life of a people. That is what this does, because if you don't do this, then those individuals living in certain zip codes, those individuals who don't have the financial means to pay as you play and go will lose. And this disparity that you see on poverty in this central Ohio will grow more and more. You know, Don and I had the good fortunes. We did a $25,000 personal challenge grant. That's how important this has been. I spent 16 years as president of the King Arts Complex. I spent 10 years as president-chairman of the Lincoln Theater. I spent 10 years on the museum board. I spent six years on GCAC. I spent five years on CATCO's board. I am not a stranger to this. And what we have done is make it available. I think the stewardship that you're going to see from the arts leadership if you do this, it, it will, it will raise all boats. I thank you. I know this is a tough decision, but it's the right decision, and this is, I think, the responsibility and the rent we pay here on earth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. James. And to the young ladies, thank you so much for coming and being a part of this important conversation. Have a good evening. Next up, we have Mr. Mike Gonadakis, followed by Celeste Stewart, followed by Denise Regg.
Council members, thank you very much. My name is Mike Gonadakis. I represent art, advocates for responsible taxation, and we uniformly oppose the 7% ticket tax proposed by Nationwide Arena and the GCAC. But just to be upfront, this isn't about liking the arts or disliking the arts. I hope every single person in this room supports the arts with their hard-earned money. My family has a cosign membership. My family has a zoo membership. We go to the arts festival every year and buy art. The kids buy art. We buy art. So we love the arts in this town, just like you do and everyone else who's spoken or will speak. But you see, this issue has to do with the voters and your constituents, because they voted not once, but multiple times, that they don't want to own arena. They do not want to pay for an arena, and they certainly don't want to bail out Nationwide Arena with a 7% ticket tax. Look, our zoos, our libraries, our metro parks, and our schools have to go to voters and ask for increased money or a renewal of a levy every single time they need more money. But yet, what GCAC is doing is asking you guys to circumvent, circumvent the will of the voters and instead impose this tax. We're simply asking, let the voters decide. Let's take this to the voters, and if the voters decide 50% plus one that they want this, so be it. But let's have that public debate with the voters as they have to do with the schools and everything else. As you all know, recently, the Columbus schools did have to close for a couple days because they didn't have air conditioners or their air conditioners were broken. Think of the optics of this. GCAC and Nationwide is coming to you and asking to impose a tax, not to put new air conditioners in our schools or to fix the broken ones, but to put new air conditioners in Nationwide Arena or, or for a new roof. I mean, the optics of that are terrible, let alone how you, how you respond to your constituents and, and the citizens of Columbus on this issue. If we're going to raise revenue to fix our schools, let's put that money at our schools, we would submit at least. The Art Council said multiple times, and I attended all three hearings, that, that they need money. It's a crisis, according to them. You know, Tom, Mr. Katzenmeyer, he's a great man, and he works really hard. When he was asked by, I believe it was the Columbus Dispatch, why he wants a ticket tax, his quote was, his words, not mine, "It's our turn." It's printed in the papers. You can simply Google it and see it. "It's our turn." Not sure that's a good standard to use to impose a 7% ticket tax. Look, we're blessed in this town with great and generous titans and great companies like Les Wexner, AEP, Cardinal Health, Nationwide Arena, Cover My Meds. We would submit to you guys to challenge the arts community and ask them, why aren't they fundraising like every other big city in our state and our nation? Why? Laugh all you want, but if you were fundraising, you would see that you would have, you would have enough money, just like Cleveland, just like Cincinnati, that, that raises terrific revenue from the private sector and not on the backs of taxpayers. They already get up to $7 million a year in our hotel bed tax, which is one of the highest in the community. And what we're asking at the end of the day is please, instead of making a unilateral decision, let the voters decide. You know, our group in 2015 took the, took an issue to the, to the voters on the zoo tax, and we beat the zoo 70-30, and they came back and just asked for a renewal. We're prepared to move forward with a referendum if, if the City Council does choose to, to enact a 7% tax. I thank you for my time, and I appreciate, any questions you may have?
President Protem.
Thank you, President Harden. So who is the group? You just mentioned they were around in 2015, and so I'm confused what art was in 2015 and what this group is now.
Excuse me, I apologize. Council President, Councilman Sinziano, our group in 2015 consisted of Democrats, Republicans, independents that lived in Franklin County, young, old, black, white, you name it. We were a rainbow coalition that came together to do, to fight against the zoo tax. This time around, if you look at our group now, it's the same coalition of people, all different walks of life, artists, you know, people that are concerned with their taxes, Democrats, Republicans, the whole nine yards. So I believe we're a cross, cross-section of our community.
I just, just want to follow up. Is the, is the fundamental question the amount of support for, for, for this initiative, or is it use, or is it, what, like, what is the, the crux of?
Well, I, I think it would be all the above, sir. I think that's a great question. You know, certainly, a revenue stream of new tax dollars going to Nationwide Arena, we would submit respectfully as offensive, number one. Number two, such an enormous haul of a 7% tax on... Number two, such an enormous haul of a 7% tax on everything from the Palace Theater, if I want to take my kids to the Christmas Carol at the State Theater, now we're going to tack on 7%. I think the voter should have a say in that. And if the voters approve it, they approve it. But at a minimum, it should be a voter initiative. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yes. Next speaker to come in for council is Celeste Stewart, followed by Denise Regg, followed by Teri Gier.
Good evening, Council President Harden and members of council. My name is Celeste Malvar Stewart, and I am at 391 East Livingston Avenue, and I'm representing my own independent brand, Malvar = Stewart. I am an independent textiles and fashion designer as well as fiber artist, and I'm here to really say that I wholeheartedly endorse GCAC's proposed art and culture ticket fee for many reasons, and these are just a couple of them. First off, I was really extremely fortunate to be one of the many featured artists in GCAC's Art Makes Columbus, Columbus Makes Art brand marketing campaign. And I can't tell you enough and express how valuable that campaign was to me in helping me with general exposure. Otherwise, being independent, people wouldn't find me here in this city. I've had prospective customers. I've had writers from all around the country. I've had people visiting my studio. And with its campaign, GCAC has made my work more accessible. It's also helped support the business and promotional side for me that isn't easy as an independent designer here. Secondly, being part of the art scene in Columbus is really important for my art, my career, and also gives me a sense of purpose. And my husband and I are sort of gypsies in a way. We love to move every five or six years. And this is the first time that we've been in a city where we feel like we want to stay and we feel like we're really part of the community and grounded. And so I've been invited to participate in Eco Fashion Week in Australia. I've been invited to give a talk in England. And of course, this is an incredible opportunity for an artist like me, but it's also incredible to be able to serve as an ambassador for Columbus's art and culture. And I don't know how many times people have come up to me after giving talks in other countries and states, telling me that they had no idea about the cultural, the culture and the fashion aspect of this city, which is remarkable. So I'm just one example of how individual artists are assisted by GCAC grants and who in turn contribute to our city's art economy and overall quality of life. But this economic cycle can only continue with the kind of sustainability provided by public funding. With GCAC's proposal, Columbus can see a number of artists funded each year grow and bringing in creative and entrepreneurial residents. That's more artists or families like me and my husband, taking root in Columbus, hiring employees, selling our art, and helping our business grow, and in turn, helping the city be a little bit more wholesome, I think. And that's what we want, right? We want to pursue our passion as artists, but we also want, as a profession, to be able to contribute to our community. Just like most industries, it's true that the art sector is created with the growth of small businesses that spur economy. But sometimes, the economic impact is not recognized as readily in our sector. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next speaker to come in for council is Ms. Denise Regg, followed by Teri Gier, followed by Leanne Eagle. Eagle, I apologize.
I'm Denise Regg. I live at 6006 Rocky Road, Northwest Columbus 43235, and I'm here today representing the Columbus Symphony. So, today at lunch, Mayor Ginther shared that our top priority should be the attraction and retention of talent from across the world. The Columbus Symphony is important to this effort, not only because we mimic it perfectly with a maestro who speaks five languages, an assistant conductor from Columbia, and musicians of national and international backgrounds, but because we come together under one banner, woven together through the universality of music, and in doing so, provide a reference point for diverse groups. We are the 14th-largest city in the United States. We have the 42nd-largest symphony. At the Columbus Symphony, we work to be of service to the entire community, but we struggle to do more to meet the needs of our growing region on an already tight budget. People envision the symphony performing one of its 42 large concerts, a correct but incomplete view. Last year, we ran more than 200 additional programs, including 30 concerts and programs for children, monthly free concerts at the James', serving retirement communities, and providing neighborhood concerts. Last year, our educational programs grew in attendance by over 30%. The past two years has seen growth in this area of over 50%, but it isn't enough. We reach only a portion of the children we need to reach. These programs are often free, enact no cost to the schools or the children, but they are needed and important to our children's development, sense of belonging, and can ignite inspiration, hope, and a sense of empowerment. Just this summer, we found out that if we are going to continue these programs and have our children come, we will need to provide buses, which we will find a way to do. With studies connecting music to health and well-being, we now know that music can lower blood pressure, boost memory, relieve pain, boost immunity, and even fight cancer. This summer, we launched Columbus Symphony Cares, a customizable program serving the needs of social service organizations and schools that brings the transformative power of music to clients, volunteer, constituency, staff, and students. More than 10 groups are current partners, including Cancer Support Community, Our Lady of Guadalupe, Goodwill, Directions for Youth and Family. As Columbus grows, our arts must keep pace. Working longer and harder is not enough to enable us to reach more children, more seniors, more diverse groups, the sick and the just plain tired, who need the uplifting power of music. For that, we would need, we need this ticket fee proposal, which, we need the money this ticket fee proposal would generate. It's taken us many, many years, more than 15, to get to this hearing. According to Forbes, in August of just this year, Columbus is the only large northern city to have grown more than 10% between 2010 and 2017. If now is not the time, then when would be? With phenomenal growth, we continue to lag behind our benchmark cities in public funding for the arts. We ask City Council...
Thank you so much for your testimony. You can finish your sentence.
Okay. It really was the last sentence. "We ask City Council to commit to empowering the Columbus Symphony to make that difference happen for the people of central Ohio." Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker to come before council is Ms. Teri Gier. Leanne Eagle, Mr. Joe Motil.
Good evening, President Harden, members of Columbus City Council. My name is Teri Gier, and I am the interim director of the Pazuti Collection, the address of which is 632 North Park Street. Having worked in the state's budget office as a senior analyst for a bunch of years, and more recently as chief financial officer at Columbus State Community College, I have often engaged in assessing revenue, raising proposals, and evaluating potential returns on investments. So please know I understand and really appreciate the importance of the careful consideration and decision-making that faces council on this proposal. Additionally, a couple of years at the Wexner Center for the Arts as development director helped me understand the hard and relentless work necessary to secure private gifts from individuals and corporations and public funding from national and local funding agencies. Pazuti Collection is a nonprofit art museum that operates in the short north. We exhibit contemporary visual art by artists from around the globe. Just last month, you may know, we celebrated our fifth anniversary. We took a moment to send a special note of gratitude to those who took a leap with us during our formative years. First among them was the Greater Columbus Arts Council. GCAC supported us financially from the beginning, lending legitimacy to and recognition of our work. Others leapt next, including Big Lots, PNC, AEP, Huntington Bank, and Honda, among others, generously supporting our education and engagement programs. Our admissions fees are among the lowest in the city, and since day one, we've offered free admission to students of all ages. In just five short years, Pazuti Collection has welcomed over 40,000 visitors who came to see 16 exhibitions that showcased over 600 works by more than 200 artists from over 40 countries, and they participated in field trips, guided tours, artist talks, and other special events. The programs at Pazuti Collection help drive tourism income and attract visitors statewide and beyond. To see a contemporary collection regarded as one of the top 200 in the world. It helped burnish our city's national and international reputation as a city on the move, and it recently helped forge an initiative that will add the Pazuti Collection to the Columbus Museum of Arts leadership portfolio beginning January 1st, 2019, further elevating the city's art scene and leveraging existing resources. But private gifts and ringing out operational efficiencies are not enough to sustain and further develop a vibrant art scene in this city. Additional public funds are necessary to bolster the capacity of our city's major arts organizations, as many before me have said, especially the free and, the free reduced in education-related program, reduced price and education programming. The proposed ticket fee will move us in that direction. Thank you for this time to speak with you this evening and for your most serious consideration of this important proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gier. Next person coming for council is Ms. Leanne Eagle, Mr. Joe Motil, Ms. Nanette Macy-June.
Good evening, Council President Harden, members of council. My name is Leanne Eagle. I reside at 4103 Fairfax Drive, Columbus. I am proud to serve as the executive director of Momentum, a local nonprofit that engages children in dance, music, and performance in order to develop life skills. And as you may recall, in May, our dancers danced right here in this very room during a city council meeting when you declared Momentum Week in Columbus, in the city of Columbus. Beginning last month and continuing through the rest of this school year, Momentum teaching artists and piano accompanists will be in 30 Columbus City School classrooms, providing nearly 900 4th grade boys and girls with joyful dance classes during the school day. We are also providing classes to nearly 100 preschool-aged children, also through Columbus City Schools. These classes are at no cost to families. Momentum is based on the power of the arts to transform lives. Over the course of the school year, students develop self-confidence, self-discipline, and a passion for excellence through their engagement in our program. Teachers, parents, and the dancers themselves routinely share with us the power of the program, of their experience with our program. Teachers tell us that Momentum increases their students' ability to learn, both visually, auditorily, and through kinesthetic learning. It teaches them teamwork and respect. Recently, a parent told us how her son was being bullied at the beginning of the school year. Through his experience with Momentum, his self-confidence increased, and it turned what had been a negative start to the school year into a great school year. And what we hear from the children themselves is probably the most poignant. A dancer most recently wrote to us, "My favorite part of Momentum is that we can dance, forgetting about bad things happening and where people come from." Another dancer wrote us, "When I started Momentum, it made my whole world brighter." According to the Ohio Alliance for Arts Education, high-quality arts education engages students in the work of learning, thinking, communicating, creating, and collaborating. It also fosters the 21st-century skills needed for advanced learning and career success. That's why the proposed ticket fee is so critical. It allows organizations like Momentum to sustain and expand free access to quality arts education and learning programs for family, many of whom would not otherwise have these opportunities. The proposed ticket fee is a well-researched, fair, and practical solution to a critical challenge. Momentum strongly encourages City Council's adoption of GCAC's proposed ticket fee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eagle. The next speaker to come before council is Mr. Joe Motil, followed by Ms. Nanette Macy-June, followed by Connie Boykin.
President Harden, members of City Council, Pro Tem Sinziano. Joe Motil reside at 167 West Cook Road. First of all, I've always been 100% behind the arts in this community for, I'm a lifelong resident, even had the honor of playing in a jazz quartet at the Spangler Cummings Art Gallery at the very first gallery hop, back in the day when I used to go out and play. But trying to use the importance of the arts and a city's cultural identity as a means to continue bailing out a hockey team in the arena they play in for free is really nothing more than a sleazy tactic that anyone with a lick of political perception can see right through. We've already given the arena millions from casino tax revenue that should have gone, never gone to the arena in the first place and was supposed to go to the Columbus Public School District. Our priority should be with our children's education first and not that of bailing out a privately-owned hockey team in the arena they play in for free. But due to our elected city and county officials, who took it upon themselves to dishonor the vote of the Columbus electorate, who overwhelmingly rejected the public financing of the arena at the ballot, you came up with some convoluted behind-the-scenes plan that gave the public unwanted ownership of the arena in 2012. Furthermore, the leaders of the city, both corporate and political, chose to ignore the studies that were presented to them in the mid-'90s, when the idea of building Nationwide and Schottenstein's Arena began. The study stated that two competing arenas could be economically disastrous for both sides. And such worries of doom resulted in an agreement that was made between Ohio State University and the backers of the arena to not compete between one another for various venues. But when the voters of Columbus overwhelmingly rejected the 0.5 sales tax percent increase in '97 to help pay for Nationwide Arena, that agreement went into the trash basket. And for whatever reason, Nationwide Arena has failed miserably to draw the many different events that it promised during its sales pitch in 1997 sales tax increase ballot proposal. So here they are again, begging for operating costs while using the arts as a way to gain favor. And I don't buy the doomsday scenario that's been presented by the GCAC. The symphony members just received a 3% raise, and Columbus is the fastest-growing city in the Midwest. There's a lot of people getting rich and benefiting financially from this growth spurt, and a lot of people being left behind and being asked to subsidize those getting rich from this economic growth. We're tired of getting squeezed and taxed for the benefit of the rich in this city while our voices are ignored, while regarding social, economic, and educational needs of working families and the lack of disciplinary action of rogue police officers that roam about our neighborhoods. In closing, Columbus Hotels generated record bed taxes last year, on top of nearly 7.5% increase in the number of hotel rooms that are going to be built through 2019, on top of a new 22-story, 468-room hotel at the south end of the convention center. This will most certainly help increase the city's expenditures to GCAC and the convention facilities authority. And if you want to raise money for the arts, I really think you should write legislation mandating developers in Columbus to give us a cut of their millions in tax savings from their multimillion-dollar tax abatements that are granted to them on a regular basis. Or you could easily include the GCAC as an expenditure in our general fund if you got rid of some of the unwarranted bureaucracy here in City Hall.
Thank you, Ms. Motil. President Pro Tem has a question.
Thank you, President. Are you a member of Artists for Responsible Taxation?
Yes, I am. Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you, Motil. Ms. Motil. Next person to come before council is Nanette Macy-June, followed by Connie Boykin, followed by George Skestos.
Okay, I shouldn't have done that. Good evening. I'm Nanette Macy-Junes, the director of the Columbus Museum of Art and the current president of Columbus Cultural Leadership Consortium. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you this evening. I wholeheartedly support the proposed ticket fee, but tonight I want to talk about pride. I want to talk about pride and the capacity of arts and culture to make a difference in our community. Columbus has the honor of being one of only a handful of cities in America with both a museum and a library hailed as a national medal winner by the Institute for Museum and Library Services. The national medal is the highest honor conferred on the museums and libraries in our country for service to their communities. It is the Oscars of the cultural world. Receiving a national medal means that you have gone beyond, beyond caring for your collection and mounting acclaimed exhibitions like our recent Picasso show or our upcoming I2 Sing America exhibition. You have made a change in the actual fabric of your community. Columbus Museum of Art makes a change, makes a difference in everything, every day, excuse me, with programs that we offer for preschoolers, grade schoolers, teens, future doctors, teachers, and people living with Alzheimer's. Our newly-launched Wonder School, already a national model and a partnership with the Columbus State Community College and the Childhood League Center, fosters curiosity and creativity for young children and for the next generation of early childhood educators. With this unique program, we are transforming the quality of the educators that shape the minds in our daycares and our preschools and throughout our community. More than 40 years ago... More than 40 years ago, we began providing free museum experiences to all Columbus City School 5th graders. I am proud and hope to continue that rite of passage and tradition. I am equally proud for the more than dozen years that we have offered free Sundays in our community. In our weekly teen open studios, we provide more than 500 hours of free programming for more than 1,200 teens each year. For our teens, we build their critical thinking skills and the confidence critical for their future success. Our Artful Analysis Program, a partnership with the Ohio State University College of Medicine, improves the physicians of tomorrow by cultivating superior skills of observation and building empathy in young doctors. Our Teaching for Creativity Institute transforms learning by cultivating creativity in the minds of educators, young learners, and adults through a process of using critical thinking and imagination to generate new ideas that have value. Our Sparking Imaginations Tour, a partnership with Central Ohio's Alzheimer's Association, provides a chance to imagine and connect for our citizens living with Alzheimer's and their caregivers, a precious moment of clarity for people who so often live in shadows. Many of the programs I mentioned are partnerships. Columbus is a place where collaboration makes a tremendously positive impact on the quality of life in our community. These collaborations and programs make a difference for people of all ages in Columbus. They are the projects that I am most deeply proud of. They are the reason we are awarded a national medal. They are at risk without sustainable funding. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Nanette. Any question? Councilmember Brown.
Ms. Macy-Junes, can you tell us approximately over the past 12 years, you've offered up free opportunities for people to come to the museum on Sunday? Give me an idea about how many people that may be.
Okay, so we serve about 300,000 people a year now, and a full, fully a third of that attendance is now on free Sundays. It has grown and grown. People come. It is the day where the most families come. And you know the, you know the families who collect everybody else in the neighborhood and bring them down. It's, it's a great day. So about a third.
Thank you so much. Next person to come before council is Mr. Connie Boykin, followed by George Skestos. And just because we're getting up close to the 7 o'clock stop, our last speaker this evening will be David Gentilini. I apologize.
President Harden, Ms. Tyson, Mr. Stenziano, Mr. Brown, new guy, Reamy. I'm here today because, first of all, I'm glad to be invited, number one. I've got an opportunity to see the broad breadth of the arts community in Columbus, Ohio, and I see a lot of things that go on. I've never been invited to anything when it comes to the arts, even though I represent an organization that represents the jazz musicians of the Near East Side of Columbus. And we've been over there playing and making music and making great music for the last 32 years. And I'm here because we have not received any money from anything, and the money that we have received has been minskul. And, you know, I'd like to be included into this program. And I'd like to read this for you. Says, "The Society for Creative Art Talent was founded in 1986 in Columbus, Ohio by master musicians and jazz music advocates. Because of diminishing employment and job opportunities, the society proposed purpose was and is to advocate for the employment and job opportunities. The society also advocates for the support and maintaining teachers and training young people in the jazz music tradition of the Columbus Near East Side. The society's mission is to support musicians, educate youth, and teach jazz music to future generations. The society's founders meant to preserve the African-American oral tradition, historical, excuse me, historical tradition of the Columbus Near East Side. The society's intent is to create jazz art musical experiences to inspire young people to tap into the African-American cultural heritage. The society's laser focus on keeping the African-American jazz tradition alive and fusing it into the next generation. The society supports an increase in the tax." Proposed by the Greater Columbus Arts Council, but itself has never been given adequate encouragement or support for obtaining our organization's goals or objectives. The Greater Columbus Arts Council has not shown appreciation for the society's goals of preservation, preserving African-American musical heritage by giving strong support to its artists initiative, artistic initiative. The society in the future would like to have all the same types of consideration, groups like Columbus... I'm gonna finish this. Columbus Symphony, Ballet Met, Blue Jackets, uh, and the other are, uh, groups that are over on Franklinton, and they're startups. So I'm gonna end it right there, but the main thing is that we would definitely like to have some consideration and stop being ignored, because there's a lot of people out there that need jobs, that need support, that need income, and it's just not these people here.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Macy-June. One second, I think Councilmember Tyson has a question.
Mr. Boykin, are you, um, you're a nonprofit organization?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask that you see Jamie Goldstein in the back, because she is with, she's, she's waving her hand, wave your hand, Jamie, because Jamie will be able to share with you the different programs that GCAC has, and certainly as a nonprofit organization, a music organization, that you could look to different grants and funding, as well as even some of the individual artists. So I think Jamie could be able to assist you with the funding of GCAC.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Jamie, wave your, turn, you turn around, Mr. Boykin, there, she is raising her hand.
Thank you, Mr. Boykin. Next person coming for council is Mr. George Skestos, and then followed by David Gentilini.
Good evening, President Harden and members of City Council. I'm George Skestos. I live at 140 Park Drive, Columbus 43209. I come here tonight as a businessman and father and president of the Board of Trustees of the Columbus Museum of Art. Like most things that we treasure, art requires careful stewardship and continual reinvestment. An investment in, in the Columbus cultural arts sector and the Columbus Museum of Art is an investment in the very fabric of our community, one with clear economic and cultural rewards. The cultural arts sector helps, helps the business sector thrive. In cities where business matters, art matters. Now is our time, and the world is watching us. The Washington Post and the Denver Post recently reported this year that great museums matter for the locations of Amazon's second headquarters. In that article, both the museum and the Wexner Center were called out as having dynamic programs and a diverse collection. To cities that want to attract smart people hoping to work for successful businesses and corporations, their message was clear: invest in your art museums. As a father, raising four children in this community, my message to you is clear: invest in our cultural arts sector. I want my children to grow up in a community where the arts are cherished, provocative, and remain at the heart of our social and cultural compass. Historically, the entire sector has been underfunded. We know that. We have an opportunity with this proposal to change that, and the world is watching us. A failure to invest in our arts sector could negatively impact Columbus's ability to attract both new businesses and new talent. That failure to invest could halt the incredible gains and progress that we've made and set our city back generations. An investment in the arts makes sense because the arts are good for the economy. Each year, the nonprofit's art sector generates more than $400 million in economic activity and close to $50 million in state and local revenue. It also supports more than 15,000 jobs. Supporting arts and culture with the proposed ticket fee is not just a good idea, it's good business. As president of the Board of Trustees of the Columbus Museum of Art, as a businessman and a father, I ask you to join me in fully supporting this ticket fee proposal. The world is watching us. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much. The last speaker to come before council is Mr. David Gentilini.
Well, thank you guys for having us and hearing us out and everything. My name is David Gentilini. I'm at 945 Eastmore Boulevard, 43209. Uh, I am here representing the Schumacher Gallery, Cal State University's art museum, as well as, I guess, maybe the Franklin Arts District as well. I'm on the board for there. Being the last person, you guys have heard lots of, you know, fours, obviously, and a couple noes. You know, I just kind of, my whole take on this thing is I'd like to remember where we came from. You know, I went to college in Columbus, and I remember when we were Cowlumbus. Um, I remember when I graduated, there was a thing called the brain drain. We, the city was not taking that seriously, and, you know, and we weren't really competing with most anything. That's changed. We've become a major competitor. It's all pointed out where we've been. And to be honest, when I tell my students at Capital now that, you know, we used to be called Cowlumbus, you know, they kind of look at me a little funny that, how was that even a thing? You know, my gallery has lent works to the Columbus Museum, to the King Arts, all kinds of things. We have, and I know for the Franklin Arts District, we have benefited from the GCAC's grants as well enough to help establish us to supply our own grants to the Franklin community. Not only will this money help maintain a publicly-owned landmark, uh, but it could very well, in result, help bring in and build new landmarks through the public arts grants applied by the GCAC. Supporting arts is vital to any successful city. I remember, I'm kind of a lifer in Columbus as well, I remember in middle school or so, my father taking me to a jewelry store in the short north where you had to be buzzed in through the front door, not once, but twice. You know, I know that 15, 20 years ago, the King Lincoln District was not necessarily somewhere where you wanted to go to watch a theater play or something along those lines. And Franklinton was not something you wanted to go for, for a drink or an art event. These things have changed because of the support of the arts. I also would like to point out and remember and help other people point out that I also remember what was there before the, not, before the arena. I don't, you know, we've come a long way from having a prison downtown, and that's a huge landmark that is now ours that needs to be supported as well. And they're willing to help with funds and help support the arts, which is desperately needed. We also have an opportunity here to distinguish ourselves as a city that loves art and is willing to support it, to put our money where our mouth is. Remember what we were. Think of what this ticket fee could help us become. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. So it's just a little past 7 o'clock, and so we're gonna stick with that in time. Fortunately, we got through a little less than, about half of the public speaking portion, but I would encourage folks to go online and to fill out the survey on our website, and feel free to contact our offices, all of our offices, about this issue. Additionally, we have community feedback forms in the back, and if you came with a written testimony, I ask that you submit that for the record. We're gonna do our best to get all of the testimonies made available via our website so that you can see the feedback, both for and against. My council colleagues and I will continue to meet with interested stakeholders to parse through the important details, details discussed tonight. Based on feedback from our neighborhoods and our own research, this council will work to draft a revised proposal over the next couple of months. We will then host further community conversations, so this will not be the only opportunity, and, and, you know, I want to make sure that folks here, this will not be the only opportunity to have public comment on this important community conversation. For context, in 2017, the city of Columbus invested $11.8 million and is on track to invest $13 million this year for arts and cultural groups through our greater partners at GCAC and our operation and capital budgets. The city of Columbus is among the biggest supporters of the arts in central Ohio. This proposal cannot be viewed, though, in isolation from a larger discussion about what this city funds, how we commit designated revenue streams to various efforts, and how we partner with human services on affordable housing, tourism, and other sectors. These are important conversations, and this council is committed to working with the mayor to explore our options to meet the many needs of our city. In the immediate future, we look forward to the continued community conversation about how we effectively, efficiently, and equitably support arts and culture in Columbus. Are there any final comments from any members of my council? Seeing none, this hearing is adjourned. Thank you.